Out here in today's fridge of cold, I'd like to welcome you to today's regular District 228 Board Meeting. Can I get roll call please? Mrs. Gleason?
Here.
Mrs. Bliss? Here. Ms. Lot?
Here.
Mrs. Motley?
Here.
Ms. Stern? Mr. Wickholm?
Here.
Mrs. Russell? Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Moving on to item two, board minute approval. Can I get a motion to approve the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes?
So moved.
Set. Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Russell? Upstate. Can I get a motion to approve the January ninth, twenty twenty-four committee of the whole and close meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss? Aye. Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Moving on to our superintendent report, Dr. Zaccora.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. First want to thank the admin team for covering me last week and the board for understanding it's a little under the weather. So appreciate you carrying on business for the district. Happy to announce and report that this Friday at Marine Valley Community College, President Russell, myself, and Mr. Me are going to be judging the DECA sectional competition. And many of our students throughout the district will be involved with, in addition to eleven, I believe, other local schools. So looking forward to representing the district there and a full day of judging. And then finally, for my report, I get to kick off the Keepers of the Light program. That is a recognition program for students and staff. And I'm certainly honored to welcome our first recipient representing the district office. If I could have him join me up here, Mr. Jerry Zermino. Now, me and Jerry go way back because he took really good care of me when I was the principal here at Oak Forest. And I just love the guy. So happy to report what some of his colleagues said about him in nominating him. Starting with Dr. Goggins. He is, Mr. Zermino, is a genuinely good person to have around. Yes, he is good at his job, but more than that, he always comes in with a positive attitude, willing to do whatever is asked. He's respectful, courteous, and friendly. He's also one of the few people at the district office that like to talk fishing, hunting, and food. District office staff look forward to seeing him when he gets to work because he brightens their day. He appreciates what District 228 has provided him and his family. In return, he has represented our district with the utmost integrity. Mr. Bafo shared, Jerry shows up every day with a great attitude and a work ethic that is exemplary. And Mrs. Malinsky added, Jerry is always nice and willing to do and do whatever it takes, go above and beyond for us. And I would just echo those statements that he's just a class act all the way, a great family man, a great colleague, and happy to consider him not only a colleague but a friend. So congratulations to Jerry Zermino. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Moving on to our superintendent reports.
Sorry, we're just determining our order. Hello from the Titans. This is always a great night because I love the opportunity to recognize people, not just in front of our Tinley Park High School staff, but in front of our larger community. I'm really sad that you're not going to meet our student tonight because he is amazing. And my, my staff member who I'm nominating can second that because she knows him as well. But his name is Josh Firestone, and he was nominated by Megan Impuma. And just an interesting tidbit of information, he actually transferred to us from that other high school across town in Tinley Park. He's already, you know, made himself very well-known at Tinley Park High School. So Megan Impuma says, I'm nominating Josh for so many reasons. To begin, he's genuinely one of the kindest people I have ever met. He's accepting of everyone and respectful to both students, staff, and peers. He always asks me how my day is going or how my weekend went. And over the years, he asks me about how technology is going. It becomes more and more rare for students to engage with me how Josh does. No matter what time of day you're at Tinley Park High School, you'll find Josh somewhere. Between theater, drama, yearbook, gamers club, et cetera, he's always involved in some way with our school, and he truly makes it a better place. This past semester, I saw Josh walking to and from school a lot, and I had just assumed that he lived pretty close. Towards the end of semester one, he was, he mentioned he was having some issues with his bus stop. So he'd just been walking to and from school, which when I asked him, it was about a two-mile walk. One day, I saw him in the pouring rain when he couldn't get a ride, and I stopped and gave him an umbrella. You would think that this might keep some kids home on rainy days, but certainly not Josh. I'm fairly certain that he has not missed a day of school, and I checked, he has not missed a day of school since I've known him. His attendance is amazing, which shows his dedication to school and his clubs. Last year, he was willing to help me with interact club activities without hesitation and was always willing to volunteer. Overall, he's just a great person who makes my day better every day during fifth period. I also have to say that many of you guys know that I, I'm also connected to the Tinley Park Chamber of Commerce. Josh was one of my volunteers for our Oktoberfest event. Again, he must have something with the rain because it was on a Sunday in the pouring rain, and he wore a big raincoat and was ready to go. So I'm sorry Josh is not here today. I would have loved for you to meet him. But my staff member is Jill Hickey. Come on up. So I'm going to read what her nominator wrote, and then I have a little piece to add as well. So Jill Hickey was nominated by Eric Royer. Jill Hickey has a huge impact on Tinley Park in the very short time that she's been here. In fact, this is just her second year, right? So she's only been a year and a half into this and is being nominated for this award. On a daily basis, she walks the halls and spreads positivity. She has a bright smile on her face, says hello to students and staff, and always seems to be on cloud nine. Seeing her for just a few minutes can change your day a hundred and eighty degrees. Eric Royer's a math teacher, so he made, I'm sure he put that in there on purpose. Hearing students talk about her in class proves that she's just an amazing person in the classroom, working with them. She's supportive, understanding, but holds the student accountable at the same time. I happen to have worked with Jillian on a few projects and know that she's, has one focus, and that is her students. Her goal is to make sure that Tinley Park students have an amazing time while they're here. She goes to all games and activities, and that's the truth, that she can. She coaches, she tutors, she even volunteers during assemblies, even though she might not be the best player of musical chairs. There is a story there, I won't tell it. The reaction she received during that assembly and the way students run up to her and talk to her make it well-known that she is a teacher that makes Tinley Park High School a better place. You would, you wouldn't believe that she's been with us for a year and a half. And when I interviewed her in my office, and I was just even blown away by her during the interview, she came from an elementary district where some of you know Joe Matisse is the superintendent. And I have, I know Joe. And I literally grabbed my phone and I started texting him like, what, what are you doing? Like, she's amazing, do you know she's leaving because I'm going to take her from you? And he had nothing but over-the-top blowing things to say, telling us that it was definitely our win, that she wanted to come to the high school ranks. So she is almost like a hand in the pot of everything at Tinley Park High School, and she's been here for three semesters. So I'm very proud to introduce her to you and to our community because you will see her around for a long time. Congratulations.
You can hold this up for your picture.
Hi, everyone. We've got our two Keepers of the Light from Hillcrest High School. We're going to start with our student award winner, which is Sidney Yancy. Come on up. Sidney was nominated by our head boys' basketball coach, Don Houston. So Coach Houston wrote, Sidney is a current sophomore, AP and honor student, boys' basketball manager, student volunteer, and an all-around excellent person that carries a weighted GPA of five point five one. Sidney is Coach Houston's right-hand man. Sidney's assistance to the athletic department is invaluable. Sidney not only adequately completes his duties as a second-year manager of the boys' basketball team, but he also works our, worked our girls' tournament, our holiday tournament that we just held, and volunteered for several wrestling matches this season. Sidney's disposition may be quiet and modest, however, he's an important asset in our athletic department and a prototype for a proper representative of Hillcrest High School. Congratulations. Okay, and our staff award recipient this month is Emily Bow. So she was nominated by Lindsay Lopez, one of our counselors. Ms. Lopez wrote, Emily is in a new position this year as a facilitator for the freshman learning center. She's been a welcome addition and has had a smooth transition. She always, in caps, goes above and beyond when meeting with all students. She's willing to do anything and everything expected of her in our grade-level team meetings. She also has an amazing rapport with all freshmen in the FLC, which is not easy to do. She works in the best interest of all students, and I appreciate everything she does for our freshmen. On behalf of me, as the principal, we were put in a rather challenging spot early on in the school year with our freshman learning center, and it's a really important part to what we're trying to do with pass rate and freshman on-track numbers and things like that. And immediately, everyone in the room is like, Emily, she'd be great, she'd be awesome. And of course, we went and asked her about it, and without hesitation stepped into the role and has absolutely killed it from day one. I've got, as I've mentioned, a bit of an athletic background, and I like competing and competition. And so we've created a bit of a competition amongst all four of our grade-level teams. Freshmen ran away with the first semester in terms of highest freshman on-track numbers and pass rate that we've seen yet out of, out of our freshman class, and a large part due to Emily. So congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Bremen High School and Dr. Rosinski, she will be giving birth to her second child on Thursday. Our two individuals that we would like to honor, first off, is Kevin Castillo-Rosso. Kevin, if you can step up. If you don't know, Kevin is the voice of Bremen High School. Every day, he does our pledge of allegiance, as well as all of our announcements, both in English and Spanish. Kevin is an early graduate of Bremen High School. He's actually missing class this evening at South Suburban, along with being an Illinois State Scout. What you don't know about Kevin, Kevin and his family came to us in the fall of twenty twenty-two from the country of Colombia, where he did have limited English-speaking skills. And, you know, just the practice of everything that he does on a daily basis very much made us proud and just more or less spotlight him in this honor. Mrs. Ignalzy and Ms. Arguelis were individuals that had honored him. And the words that they said about him was, Kevin arrived at our school and immediately immersed himself in and all that is Bremen. He's an advocate for himself and became an active member of our school community. Ms. Arguelis stated, words cannot do this young man justice. Kevin is simply a beacon of hope for all of us, and he has shown us all through his hard work and determination that you can achieve your goals. Could not be more proud than to honor Kevin for this award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. And for our staff member, Millie Sevich. Congratulations. First time on camera. Little bit about Millie, she is a huge asset to our building. This past semester, she's done everything in all of our academic roles, from being a paraprofessional to assisting with caseloads, to assisting in our classrooms, as well as being our first-ever girls' wrestling coach. She did not have a background in it, we posted it. Millie came to Tom and I and more or less said, I'll learn whatever it is. I want to be very much part of Bremen High School. And she is doing a fantastic job with getting our girls ready for competitions. She was able to be here tonight because we were able to have our conference, which will be on Saturday, that they'll be competing at. Millie was nominated by Mr. Johnson as well as Ms. Bedrin. Mr. Johnson stated, Millie goes above and beyond to help both students and staff. Her ability to adapt and work with all groups of students is amazing. Her positive attitude has genuinely made a difference and an impact on Bremen. And then Ms. Bedrin stated, it feels like we won the lottery with having Millie on a daily basis. She left the corporate world, wanted to get into education, and she is moving mountains at Bremen High School. She is destined to do great things. Teaching is her calling, and we are so lucky to have her as part of our team. So we'd like to honor Millie as our January Keeper of the Light for our staff. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I'm going to invite Ja Rodriguez up. All right. It's my pleasure to honor tonight our student Keepers of the Light. Ja has certainly been nominated by a staff member, but as soon as people saw the names of the students on the list of who had been nominated, he stuck out as someone who was extremely worthy of the recognition because not only is he an athlete, but he's a student, but most importantly, he's a wonderful young man. And so he was nominated by Amanda O'Rourke, who's our librarian, and this is what she had to say. She said, Ja's an excellent student who brings light to whatever space he occupies. Sorry, I can't read it. I got a hold of this far. Can you hold that? See what I mean? All right. He is kind to others, intelligent, and is a phenomenal reader who comes in to check out multiple books each week. He has been instrumental in expanding the graphic novels section of the library by giving us recommendations on new books and series, as well as reviews of our current inventory. We will most definitely miss Ja in the library as he graduates this year. So what Ms. O'Rourke, when we came to greet him in his classroom and let the class also share in this recognition and, and being able to honor him, she pointed out to all the students how many books he had read that are in our collection, and he has been instrumental in establishing our, our genre, our anime? Manga. My kids will be mad I got that wrong. The manga genre, reading how many books?
Over three hundred and forty.
Over three hundred and forty manga books and recommending different series. And Ms. O'Rourke just said that his, his expertise in the area has been invaluable in terms of recommending what to bring in next for our students to enjoy. So it's wonderful. And, and all the kids, not only did they know he's a great student, but they had no idea he was such an avid reader and certainly were, were certainly appreciative of everything that he's done for us too. So congratulations to Ja. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So this last staff member to recognize, certainly the, it's never been truer, truer, last but not least, right? I'm going to ask Jen DeBoer to come on up for some recognition. So as many of you know, Jen has been here, one of the few staff members, along with Jerry, I suppose, who've been here even, even longer than, than when I got here. This is Jen's thirty-fourth year, and at the end of this year, she will be retiring. To say that Jen has been the heart of not only Oak Forest High School, but our district, is an understatement. When I first started here years and years ago, Jen was actually the sole social worker between Tinley Park High School and Oak Forest High School. And she had a smile on her face back then with all those students, as well as continuing that smile for all these years later. Those of you who've been around a while too also can realize the fact that not only has Jen helped countless thousands of students, she's actually helping those students' children at this point. It's really a blessing in this community that our, that our parents and our families entrust us with their children as well. And so we've been able to see lots and lots of families. And, you know, you hear people when they call to talk to me about things, when they call to talk to other staff members, and they say, oh, Mr. DeBoer's still there? She's awesome, she was awesome when I was there, and she's awesome still, I'm sure. So it's just been a wonderful ride. I know, I know Jen loves this place, she loves this community, and we certainly love her and want to show her that. And she was recommended actually as a Keeper of the Light by most of her, not, not most, all of her colleagues, but some took the time to write it, right? Because everybody wants to recognize Jen. So this was, she was nominated by Carrie Peca, Jen Keating, Cassie Reed, and Lily Holman. And they said, this was Jen DeBoer, or DeBo, as we affectionately call her, her last year at Oak Forest High School. She's been here for thirty-four years and is such an integral part of the Oak Forest community. Jen always has a smile on her face and is always willing to go above and beyond for students, staff, and families. Everyone knows they can count on her for anything they need, and she truly brightens everyone's day. Her generous spirit, positive attitude, and caring nature help make Oak Forest High School a place where students feel welcome and valued. We all feel so fortunate to have gotten to work alongside her, and we will miss her so much when she retires in May. I want to add just one quick story. Over the years, I had the pleasure of evaluating Jen through the process here and there. And, and she probably remembers this, there was one year that I told her, you know, Jen, you're great, you're awesome in everything that you do, but I, I need to give you a recommendation. And my recommendation really is that you take care of yourself and take care of your family and, and maybe stop being quite as generous with all the extras that you're taking out of your own pocket, as in the kids making, that you make sandwiches for and bring lunches for. And Jen looked at me, I don't know what I did. Exactly. She looked at me and she said, Jane, I respect everything that you've said, but you're just asking too much. I can't do that. So that's just how Jen is, how she's always been. And for me to, to try and, you know, try and limit her generosity and her kindness and her love for the students was probably a step too far, right? So congratulations to Jen and, and your wonderful career, so. Okay, so I think we're going to do a picture out in the hallway. But in the meantime, I would love to introduce the next show that is coming up, so we can get started with them. We've got our three illustrious deans from Oak Forest High School. They're going to do a little presentation about some of the fun we had here first semester with attendance. So we're going to welcome Dr. Gomez, Mr. Thormeyer, and Mrs. Bluhar to the floor. Oh, wait.
So.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
How's it going? Amir Gomez, Dean of Students.
Yeah, Jason Thormer, also Dean of Students. So we just wanted to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about some of the attendance goals that we're working on this last semester and also going to be looking at through our second semester at school. So some of the things and the reasons that we decided to make this our goal within the dean's office is that we do know that it's proven that academicity and social success are directly related within attendance. So we sat down together and we decided that we were going to look at a few things and some objectives in order to try to see if we can get that needle to move in the positive direction for attendance of our students here. So some of the things that we were focusing upon are some new interventions, some new insights, and also we built in some incentives, all right, to try to see that we can look at and associate here with the attendance of our students, okay? So we're just going to share the efforts here and some of the sports that we're doing to hopefully grow our students in their attendance. So some of the interventions that we're working on, we have an eight-day letter that we've been sending out for some time. We decided to go back in and look at the percentages and look at these eight-day letters. So the eight-day letters are any student that is either, has been unexcused or excused absences for the state they see that has started to become excessive. So we went back in and kind of looked at it as more of a proactive approach, where we can assist. We also added in the, the exact amount of days that they have been absent and the reasoning between that and to see where it is that we can assist within the attendance, okay? We also, when we send these eight-day letters, we meet with the students. We also then call the parents, let them know this is a form letter that we sent home. Where can we assist? Where can we help? And try to see that we're not just using it as a cookie cutter answer here and try to see where we can help along the way. We also use some tier one and two interventions through our PPS department, some other aspects. If we get to the point that we have home visits, we come up with attendance, individual attendance contracts for the students, student survey data that we brought out, we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. And then also, and Eric will talk about this a little bit, as well as Michelle, about a dean's commission that we've come together to get the students' input also, not just about attendance, but multiple things throughout the school. When we did send out the student survey, one of the, actually, a couple of the questions that went along with it, so why, what are some of the reasons you come to school, and then what motivates you to come to school? It's all completely anonymous as it goes through. And some of the reasons that showed up, see, these were some of the most popular ones, that they're, that they're friends, that they're in sports, that they have to go, their parents are making them go, while they focus on their future, some specific ones towards teachers and things of that nature. But we also countered that, what are some reasons that you might not want to come to school? And that's being, you know, being sick, some of the people are there. Again, you know, you'll see some consistencies for why or why not. And this is where we're starting to now build those relationships to find out how can we help these tier of students become more consistent coming to school, okay? Probably the most interesting one that, that we found within the student survey is we asked, do you have adults at school that you feel generally that care for you, that you can check in with, that will advocate for you? And we did get a very, I would say, positive response to that. So we had, in the blue section, forty-three percent said that they have at least- So we had, in the blue section, forty-three percent said that they have at least one adult at Oak Forest that they can rely upon. And then also in the red section there, that there were thirty-two percent that say they have more than one adult. And then within that sixteen point four, again, we're going to kind of gear our efforts towards those, that no, I don't have anybody I can feel towards it. And then we have about an eight point five percent, no, because I don't choose to connect in general, okay? So somewhat of an indifference on that eight point five percent. So if we look at that and combine that together, at least seventy-five percent of the students that filled out the survey say that they do have a person that they can go to, okay, when they're here, okay? Aaron's going to talk a little bit more about some of our insights that came.
Yeah, so Mr. Thormer and I, right, you guys, through the qualitative qualitative data, sort of saying, getting the surveys, figuring out what gets kids to come to school, what gets them to kind of stay away from school, including the weather right now, right? But these insights are kind of the data points that we look at as far as real numbers that we can look at to see where we can put our efforts and how to apply our strategies. As of right now, we enjoy a really good attendance rate at ninety-three point four point five percent, but you will see that our chronic absenteeism is eighteen point three seven percent. When you look at the surrounding area, it's very comparable to the surrounding schools. But we are still setting our goals. I think most recently, we set our goal to make chronic absenteeism fifteen percent. So we look at any student that is below ten, or below ninety percent attendance, below ninety-one percent is become chronic absenteeism. So that's just kind of the hard data that we look at. Some other things that we look at here are the different trends. So chronically absent students, you know, we've always applied our efforts, but something we've done in the last semester is look at the actual trending and near the chronic students, because those are students that are missing about five to six days of semester, which, you know, when you get to that eight, eight days is kind of our magic number. We've decided, why not talk to these students and say, hey, you're so close to being at ninety, ninety-five percent, let's get you there. And oftentimes, we've seen some success in students kind of reprioritizing and coming back to school, which I think coming back from the pandemic is a big deal, to reprioritize being in school on a daily basis. This is just an interesting little tool that we've used. It basically gives year-to-year attendance. I blacked out twenty twenty-two because that was kind of skewed data. But nonetheless, we've been able to kind of look at this data and look week to week, how are we doing compared to last year? And as you can see, twenty-three, twenty-four, our current school year, we've been above last year, and then we've dipped low last year, and we've kind of concentrated our efforts to see what we can do to improve that. There's things that go into that. For instance, Thanksgiving week, which the school bar will talk about, really put an effort, because we saw a big dip in attendance during Thanksgiving week, testing, and so on and so forth. And this is just, just a quick, we have new tools, Unified Insights. Dr. Bob will probably run you in and out through Unified Insights, but this is how we're using it in just a user-friendly kind of way. This is just a one-minute video to show how how user-friendly it is, how we click through it, how we can see an abundance of data just with a few clicks. There's no voiceover. I was going to put some scientific music on despite the segment. So every one of these graphs and data points are something that we can dig into and ask why. And I think that's the important thing when we look at data. Why data here? What are the right questions to ask with data? So we now have a user-friendly platform that we just go right in and see, hey, what is our current, you know, chronic absentee rate right now? What is our current, where are our students trending, so on and so forth? So these are chronically absent students. And obviously, we have a toolkit, sort of say, for every student as far, well, for groups of students, that we can kind of attack those different goals. And our trending chronic, those are students, for instance, I looked at one of the students earlier in the evening, that student had missed five days so far this semester. So yeah, definitely trending chronic, but we wouldn't say that it's very much cause for concern, but if we just talked to that student and say, hey, if you get here a little bit more throughout the school year, you're going to kind of take yourself off that list. For some students, it definitely is, just that communication piece, I think, goes along with the findings. So again, just, you just saw how many things we were able to click on in a minute and all the data points that we went to. So that's just one of the tools that we've been using most recently, a new tool, so we'll continue to do.
All right, so while I'm here in that, cool. All right, so a lot of what Unified Insights, what we do with the kids, we use the individual names and things like that, is creating awareness for our kids, like talking with our students about, like, why are they absent? What does it mean? Now, a lot of kids don't date, all right, you know? So helping them understand how close they are to the days that they're missing for a semester, like, why are they missing? How does that affect their grades? So a lot of the focus, especially in the Dean's Office, is what relationships are we building with kids? Like, it's not just about being in trouble, right? We want them to come in, we want them to ask us for help, we want to talk with them. So building those relationships, we're out in the parking lot every morning, greeting the kids, we're in lunchroom every day greeting the kids, we're in lunchroom doing lunch duties, talking with the kids about what's going on at school, how can we get involved in school, what can we do to make school better for you so that you want to be here? And it could be little things. Oh, can we go back one more? Sorry.
I got it.
Okay. All right. So that was part of student awareness, part of the survey, like finding out what, what, how, how are the kids motivated to come to school? What do we need to do? His interventions are great, but we have to understand, like, if the kids want them or not, like, what incentives do they want to do better? Tomorrow, we're going to talk to all the seniors for halfway to graduation, so like here, we're going to have all the seniors come down, we're going to talk about attendance, we're going to talk about graduation, like getting ready for second semester, how amazing that is, for whatever they decide to do when they Debo, whatever career, whatever college, whatever military, whatever trade they go into, just to get them excited about second semester. Because we don't, we know senioritis is real, right? But we want to still make them motivated for school. So that's one of the ways tomorrow that we're going to do that. But like I said, we do group meetings, we have goal sites with our kids, we send out Google Forms to gather more information from them, and then individual meetings. The Dean's Commission was something new. It's an amazing little thing, once a month, we do with kids, we bring them from lunch, we come down here, we talk about different events that we want to do with them through school. One thing that they're talking about creating is a cricket event at night and having kids come out and learn cricket and teaching us about cricket, actually. So that's one of the things that we're working on for second semester. Okay, so I really love, incentives, but I really love the, like, the targeted weeks, like, learning, like, what weeks in school, why are kids coming to school, like, what can we focus on? So the month of November, we targeted tardies, and we targeted attendance, especially the week before Thanksgiving and the week of Thanksgiving. So we did this cool turkey time for students. We hid turkeys around the building for four days, and we had five, five kids a day one, gift cards, these are all the kids that we put them on social media. They were really excited to come down, it was all different kids. And then the whole month of November, we did a tardy challenge. Like, our goal was to have at least top three classrooms win donuts for the whole, for not having any tardies. But we had ten classrooms, which is a cool problem to have. So we had ten classrooms, and we all went around, all the administrators went around, Benny came with us, and we, and the teachers didn't tell the kids, which was even cooler. So they were super excited when we came in December first and gave the whole classroom donuts.
With the donuts, you know, we started talking about, it's almost like elementary class, you know, like, this is something that we might do in a grade school, middle school, but seeing how excited these classes were, it was like, hey, these are still kids. And I think sometimes us as teenagers realize that these are just, they're young adults, right? But sometimes at heart, they are still kids. So the donuts got some of those kids to school, I do believe, so.
Definitely. If you see the bottom left-hand corner picture, that was kind of a really thrill for us, is that the teacher that took that, that kid was so excited, we got to take a picture, we got to send a thank you out, so we must have things. So it really kind of brought us all together. It was really nice.
And we do have a treat for you guys. But these are just pictures of all the kids that had won, had found these little turkeys and we hid them out throughout the whole building, and they were all different parts of the building. These are all the kids that won prizes. And this is Benny giving out donuts.
Thank you for your passion.
You guys go to donut?
And the joint Oak Forest is amazing, because they made two hundred and fifty donuts. Don't worry about it.
All right, so I just want to say, want to thank the deans for sharing all a bit of the work that they've been doing this this first semester. They wrote that into their goals. We've definitely been looking, post-pandemic, as ever, school has been about attendance, about how to really engage students, and sometimes feel like they're they're part of it, and there's real purpose without them to come to school every day. And just want to thank the deans for that. It was certainly a fun way to do it. The kids appreciated it with something different and unique. And certainly, just wanted to share with you a little bit of some of the uses that we've had for Unified Insights. Really been user-friendly, we're just starting to dig into all the different pieces of Unified Insights, but it really has been helpful for us to track not only student, individual student data, but certainly also overall data, just a few little clicks in the bottom which you can see. So thank you very much, and we have lots of extra donuts.
So real quick, from from the, between the unified data, maybe the survey responses, were there any, like, interesting, like, reasons why they weren't coming to school that maybe we didn't think of, or just something that, you know?
I think the most interesting insight that we took from that is, just like our kids are all different, all the reasons are different, you know? And although the the surveys were anonymous, it's still an opportunity to look at the kids who are missing a lot of school and making sure that we're intervening with them and see, like, hey, we know that there's kids out there that just don't want to be at school, let's find a reason and get them here at school and give them some purpose and belonging, like, on this time of year. So I hate to gloss with the question, but yeah, it's just a wide array of questions, and I think that's just how our students are, that our students are so diverse and so different that we need to teach them differently, in the same way that we need to intervene differently as a Dean's Office.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
I think that you have seventy-five percent of the kids that think they can go to an adult is just phenomenal.
Yeah, we found that percentage to be, to be wonderful, yeah. And and it kind of, to touch on the same point as Aaron said, that when we look at that eight point six, that's kind of indifferent, okay? So that's kind of our goal, our side goal within that. How can we reach those? Why are you indifferent about whether or not you need to have attendance, or whether or not you don't have someone here? Is it just the fact that you don't want to admit it? Or is it the fact that really ultimately you are indifferent, you know? So we kind of look at that data within that and see, are these, are these eight point six, are they attendance issues and problems? So now, where can we help and guide them to that?
And I think a big, a big part of that is, we treat every kid the same, you know? So we may not know, like, looking at the face, we may not know all their data points, but if you treat every kid the same, we're hoping that as as far as from the administration from Dean's Office, that they at least know that they have a safe place at our office, although may have us don't take us up. Maybe they don't take us up on that offer. They're on mine.
And another cool thing in the survey that we did put up there, but they got to do a shout-out to any adult at school, so we're going to take that, and again, it's anonymous, but we're going to take that and let the teachers know and the staff members know. So there are a lot of people that are repetitive, but it's really neat for them to give those shout-outs to the the adults at school. And some of the, with the first question you had asked, for the older kids, it had to do with work, like, their work schedules interfering. But most of the answers were, like, we really thought most of the kids would have, like, we don't like school, we don't want to come to school. Most of them were like, there's no reason why we shouldn't come to school. So that was a cool, you know, that was a positive, they want to be here. But for the older kids, it was work. Okay, thank you for that. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think we are on three point three. We're going to move on to our FOIA requests.
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests from Sherry Reed Smart Procure, requested all purchasing records from nine eight twenty-three to twelve nineteen twenty-three, including purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, including quantity and price, vendor ID number, name, address, and contact information. This request has been moved. That is all.
Thank you very much. Any board member reports?
Well, I had the opportunity to attend the early graduation ceremony at Hillcrest last month. It was very nice, it was twelve students that graduated. It was nice to see that they all had actual plans of going, you know, to trade, starting to go to trade school, or start their careers, or something like that, instead of just wanting to go home and get out of school and go to sleep. And to the dean's point, a lot, each of them had, like, a staff member that they said, you know, that that could, was really instrumental in helping them to get their, to to their goals. So I thought that was a really nice ceremony to attend for those students.
Thank you for sharing. Any other board member reports? All right, if there are no other board member reports, we'll move on to new business. Ms. Morrison, four point one.
Item four point one is the January bills, attendance bills, payroll and CDS bills. Item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Miss List, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler? Aye. Item four point two, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Four point two is the recommendation to purchase the schooling, college, and career software as presented at Committee of the Whole. The superintendent is recommending the purchase of the software for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler? Aye. Item four point three, Mr. Banpro?
Item four point three is for the Oak Forest generator bid. Bid was solicited for the work at Oak Forest High School to replace existing gas-powered generator that has won't be honored since it was for life. So low mitters were interviewed as to the equipment manpower production lead times. It is our recommendation that the board accept a low responsible base bid submitted by Electrical Systems for the installation of a new three hundred kilowatt gas-powered generator. The total for this base bid is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Sir.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler? Aye. Item four point four, Dr. Sakura?
Thank you, Mr. Wrestler. Item four point four is press policies. After careful review and upon press, an attorney recommendations, I am recommending the approval of revisions following sections of board policy as listed in Board Docs. There's a list from two twenty powers and duties of school board identification through eight thirty visitors to and conduct on school property. There were two policies in particular that I recommend that we don't approve as discussed at last week's Committee of the Whole, and that stays the same.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler? Aye. Item four point five?
Item four point five is the bi-annual closed session minute and audio recording review. Closed session minutes are reviewed biannually to determine whether or not to keep these minutes closed to the public. Audio recordings of closed session meetings eighteen months or older may be disposed of pending approval of the Board of Education. It is my recommendation that all closed session minutes remain closed to the public, including the most recent minutes of September twelfth, twenty-three, September nineteenth, twenty-three, October tenth, twenty-three, November fourteenth, twenty-three, and January ninth, twenty-four. It is also my recommendation that audio recordings eighteen months or older be disposed of, with the exception of any dates that may be held in pending litigation.
Second. Moved by Ms. List, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. List, aye. Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item four point six, Dr. Sakura?
Item four point six is the formal approval of the BASS contract as discussed at last month's closed session, and I am recommending this for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Sorry, Mrs. Wrestler abstaining. Moving on to personality recommendations in lieu of Dr. Goggins, Dr. Sakura?
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. For medical leave, Eric Gomez. Maternity leave, Michael Blakely. Medical leave, Juan Martinez. For retirement, Mary Kate Veramantes. Resignations, Andrea Esposito and Matthew Nealan. For employment, Brian Proctor, Ashley Alexander, Irvin Fuentes, Rich Kaz, Matthew Gerd Wayne. I'm recommending these for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List, aye, Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Moving on to communications. Do we have any public comments? Comments? All right, moving on to our announcements as follows. Our next Committee of the Whole meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February thirteenth, six forty-five PM at Tilly Park High School. And our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February twentieth, seven PM at Tilly Park High School. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening and get home safe.